All right, folks, welcome everyone to the May 17th, 2023 regular meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. The time is now seven o'clock PM. Madam Secretary, do we, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of council present?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Drew Lawson.
Please join me in our invocation. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for all that you provide for us. We give thanks for all the components of our beautiful community. Our interactions, opportunities, environment, our people, our ideals, and our service to each other. We thank you for our vibrant and brilliant youth. Please especially provide guidance to our new graduates from high school and college as they embark on their new journeys. Tonight, as we induct the winners of our recent elections to their positions, we ask that you continue to remind us that there is more that unites us as a community than divides us. Help us heal our divisions. May we be reminded that the strongest bond amongst us is our passion for our city and our willingness to serve our community. Lord, you have shown us that service is love in action. This is exemplified in that you sent your only son to us on earth to serve, not be served. As this council begins another year of representing the residents of this city, please continue to bless this body with enlightenment, wisdom, and a spirit of service. May God continue to bless our community, our great state, and God bless America. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have a presentation of Outstanding Citizen Award to Patrick Mitchum, Chief Bits.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, citizens of Jersey Village. It's my honor here tonight to present the Outstanding Citizen Award to a citizen who went above and beyond. On April 12th, 2023, a medical emergency occurred in the 16,000 block of Dillard, just outside Senate Avenue Brewery. Construction work was occurring on the second floor above this business. While sitting inside the brewery, studying and minding his own business, a construction worker on the roof of this building fell off the roof. A Senate Avenue Brewery employee in the store told Mr. Patrick Mitchum what had occurred. Without hesitation, Mr. Mitchum left his seat, grabbed a medical bag, and quickly made his way to the person in distress. Upon arrival, the area was not calm, and it was a horrific sight. Other bystanders watched as Mr. Patrick Mitchum began to control the scene. He calmed the bystanders. He checked for a pulse and then began CPR to help sustain an individual's life. Although the construction worker succumbed his injuries later at the hospital, it's this selfless act of kindness and heroism that we present the Outstanding Citizen Award to Mr. Patrick Mitchum. Patrick? We're presenting a plaque here tonight that says Outstanding Citizen Award Presented to Patrick Mitchum. Jersey Village Fire Department is pleased to honor Patrick Mitchum for his selfless act in the attempt to save a fellow human life, April 12th, 2023. You want to get one at the mayor here? And we got your certificate here too. And I will just say that's probably not going to be the last life he saves because Patrick is also attending the University of St. Thomas to become a nurse, so.
Okay, with that, we move on to item D, election items. First item is a discussion with possible action to consider ordinance number 2023-11, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held on May 6th, 2023, for the purpose of electing a mayor and two city council members, Place Two and Place Three. At this time, members of council may now open the envelopes they have at the dais. Let's see, the results from the election show that for office of mayor, Bobby Warren received four mail-in votes, 457 early votes, 121 election day votes, for a total of 582 votes. James Fields received zero mail-in votes, 337 early votes, 129 election day votes, for a total of 466 votes. Councilmember Place Two, candidate Sherri Shepherd, received three mail-in votes, 612 early votes, 181 election day votes, for a total of 796 votes. For Councilmember Place Number Three, Michelle Mitchum received four mail-in votes, 583 early votes, 170 election day votes, for a total of 757 votes. The official canvas of the returns of the general election held on May 6th, 2023, reflects that the following persons were duly elected to their respective positions. Mayor Bobby Warren, Councilmember Place Two Sherri Shepherd, Councilmember Place Three Michelle Mitchum. At this point, I would call on a motion regarding ordinance 2023-11.
A move that we approve, ordinance 2023-11, canvassing the return, declaring the results of the general election held May 6th, 2023.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes. This completes the canvas of the general election held on May 6th, 2023 for the city of Jersey Village with a total of 1,048 votes. We will call the next two items on the agenda together for issuance of certificate of election to the newly elected officials and administering the oath of office to the newly elected officials. Okay, we're now going to call the next item on the agenda. We have joint public hearings. Just one joint public hearing, okay, just to be sure. I now call to order this joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission at 7:11 PM. Everyone desiring to speak should complete a public hearing comment card and present the card to the city secretary. Each speaker will be given five minutes to present information concerning the proposal to amend Chapter 14 Building and Development by amending Sections 14-100 through 14-104 to allow for updates to residential development standards and the proposal to amend Section 14-5, definition, Section 14-11, penalty, Section 14.88 All Districts, Section 105 through 110, Section 14-244 Permits and Fees, Section 14-252 Commercial Signs, Section 14-283 Off-Street Parking, and Section 14-309 Specific Standards to Allow for Updates to Commercial Development Standards. And I realize I got ahead of myself. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission present?
Yes, sir, we do.
I suspected we did, but just to get it on the record. Okay, and before we get to comments, I'm now going to call upon Evan Duval, the Building Official Representative, to give a presentation concerning the changes that are the subject of the joint public hearings.
Hello, Mayor, honourable members of City Council. And just for the record, Evan Duval is not in attendance tonight. I, Joe Newton, am joined by my colleague Ian Knox, will be giving the presentation. First of all, it's wonderful to see you all again. Tonight concludes a 14-month process that we began last year in 2022 to rewrite or to update the residential and commercial zoning ordinances for the city of Jersey Village. And we're very pleased with what we've put together. It's been a great experience working with the Planning and Zone Commission, Rick, Councilmember Drew Lawson. He's been invaluable as the liaison to the Planning and Zone Commission. We really appreciate having his feedback as we've undergone this process. And without further ado, let's get into our presentation for the changes. This slide is just the current zoning map of the city of Jersey Village for reference in case we need it. Summary of major modifications. So we separated our commercial edits into two phases, the major modifications and the things that we considered more minor in nature. As far as, to begin with, with land use, we began by consolidating commercial uses into a unified table across all the commercial districts. Right now, moving on to the next slide, just real quick. This is how things kind of currently stand in a list format rather than a table format. This can kind of just be a pain to parse when residents, specifically if they're not familiar with kind of navigating MuniCode and such. It can be just a real chore to figure out whether or not that particular use is permitted at that location. And so that kind of began an initiative. For those members who were here, when we passed those initial residential amendments, you'll recognize the format of the use table and the setback tables that we put together likewise for the commercial districts. And to that end, we've made a recommendation to add several uses in the commercial districts. We've removed several, and then we've also amended the wording of several currently existing uses to kind of just facilitate these changes. Moving on to building setbacks, we've also consolidated, as I just spoke to, the building setback requirements for each commercial district into a unified setback table. Again, just to pull it out of either a paragraph or list format and just kind of make it a little more easy to parse for the residents of Jersey Village and for staff. And then moving on to off-street parking, we've amended the off-street parking table that currently exists that uses SIC codes or SIC codes to replace them with NAICS codes, which have become, kind of emerged as the industry standard going forward. They're more descriptive, they're easier to reference. It's just kind of just the best choice to kind of bring the city of Jersey Village up to industry standard. And then in addition to that, we've amended specified land uses to either increase or reduce the parking standards required for optimum parking. I believe that we've recommended five decreases and one increase, and we'll get into that in a couple slides. And then, as I said, this is how things currently stand as far as how uses are handled in the Jersey Village MuniCode, again, in list format. This is the key to the new version of the commercial unified setback, or use table, rather. P to indicate permitted use, PC to indicate permitted with conditions, SUP to indicate only permitted with a special use permit. And here is an excerpt from the, so just to be clear, this is an excerpt from the overall unified commercial use table that we've put together just to kind of show, this is representative of what was done for the rest of the table as well. And so now, as you can see, it's as easy as find the use that you want to do at that location, scroll over to the right, find the column for the appropriate district that that property falls in, and then see the letter, as was stated earlier, either P, PC, or SUP. And then calling some attention to those that you see PC with a hyphenated number, like for example, for automobile repair shop, PC hyphen three. This is the conditional use table that accompanies the unified commercial use table. So if there is anything that it's not permitted outright, but there's just maybe, say, like one or two additional conditions that have to be met prior to being permitted at that location, this is where those things will go. So for example, as I said, for number three automobile repair shop, that's only able to be permitted in District H, and then you'd have to meet that condition requirement in order to go there instead of just being able to do it as a matter of right. And then moving on, here's an example of how things currently stand, how setbacks are communicated in each of the various commercial districts. Again, this is in paragraph format, it's just not the easiest. As you might be able to see there, it actually kind of points you to a different subsections, Section 1488B, which are the kind of the standard setbacks for all across the cities unless, excuse me, across all the districts unless modified. And so you kind of have to go to a different section, hunt for what the current standards are, and then come back to here to see how those are then modified. So rather than doing that, we've kind of just, again, took it out of paragraph format, put it into table format. We find this is a lot easier to read. And then calling attention to the left side of the screen here, that was just one-to-one putting what currently exists in the MuniCode in the Jersey Village zoning ordinance into table format. And then what you see on the right is actually what we're proposing amending it to. So notably, we're removing townhouses and patio home lots from the various commercial districts. It just kind of makes a lot of sense to not allow townhouses and patio homes in the commercial and only kind of confine those to the residential. We took that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and after a lot of discussion, we decided that that was the best pass for it. And then, as you can see on the right-hand side of the screen, there's only one note where originally there was three. Those were both pertinent to townhouses and patio homes, so they have now been struck to kind of reflect that change. What you can see here is an exhibit of those new proposed setbacks just kind of demonstrated on a site plan. So as you can see on the frontage street, there's a 25-foot setback for the side street and the other adjacent side setback, a setback of 10 feet, and for the rear, also a setback of 10. Moving on, this is just another example of kind of showing what was done, again, on the left-hand side of the screen, showing what currently exists, just taking it out of paragraph format, putting it into a table, and on the right-hand side of the screen, showing what we're recommending. And so for this one, as you can see, for non-residential buildings, we're actually proposing an increase in the rear and the side street, increasing from 10 feet to 25. But before you get concerned about whether or not that might be too much of an increase, I have put together an exhibit as well to kind of demonstrate this. Again, this is specifically in District K, which is kind of home to some more intensive commercial district uses and also some of the larger lots that exist in the city of Jersey Village. And so even though we're proposing an increase respectively for the side and the side street and rear respectively from 10 to 25, as you can see, it really doesn't place too much of a burden on those building sites that are found in District K. And then moving on to off-street parking standards.
I'm going to jump in.
Okay, sure.
I was going to try and rush through it, but the AC turned on, so I might take my time. So in regards to off-street parking standards, Joe already mentioned the NAICS codes, which ultimately are just industry standard. We've already touched on that, I'll try and, again, speed up through most of this. The next slide you're going to see, we reference the changes that occurred, that we're proposing. Manufacturing and motor freight terminals, we are essentially decreasing the required parking. Right now, it's one space per thousand of gross leasable area. You're looking at a 10,000-square-foot building, 10 parking spaces, they may have five employees. And if they have more employees, what we're proposing is it's based on the max number of employees on shift at any time. So that's a little more reasonable, just depending if they have more or less. General merchandise, personal services, those we are, again, bringing more into industry standard, which is four per thousand square feet of gross leasable area instead of five. It's not a huge difference, but it's just, again, kind of what we see around the area, around a lot of areas. Eating and drinking places, or also known as restaurants, currently it is shown as one space per two seats. We are proposing four. The main reason is, again, industry standard and two, most tables have four seats. And cars have four seats, some of them. The only increase we propose is automotive stores. An example that we gave to Planning and Zoning Commission was Discount Tire. You've got your bays where they do the work, you've got your front where the sales occur, and you've got your sales staff. The way it currently sits was one space per 800 square feet of gross floor area. And then site area, which is kind of confusing and doesn't really add up for that. So we increased the requirement for the actual inside area where there are employees and customers and added four spaces per bay because each bay typically has three to four workers. That way, we reduce some of the congestion at these type of establishments. Let's see. Here it is highlighted to the right, just kind of a quick example and call out of what those changes are. It's not as many as you'd think. And I'll speed through these two. These are not truly minor modifications, they're not minor in importance, but they are minor in the scope of the entire project, but I'll go through them. The 1488 Joe mentioned, we relocated all of those to the districts that were applicable. So there's no, you know, lacking information in certain ones, it's called out very clearly. Height, we did amend the height regulations. There are currently certain uses that are limited to four stories or 56 feet and some that are allowed to go as high as they want, like fueling station, it's kind of bizarre. So we're setting across the board four stories or 56 feet without an SUP. So if a nice big, you know, business comes in that needs six stories, they'll come before you and the zoning, or zoning, and get that approval. Signs, currently, you can have a 25-foot, a square-foot sign without any permit whatsoever. That's pretty big, so we reduced that to five, which is about the size of a poster. We reduced the total permitted sign area per wall facade to 25% of the elevation or 1,000 square feet, whichever is more restrictive. That allows, you know, just 25% of the wall, glass and everything. If you've got a massive box store, you can have 1,000 feet basically, square feet. Also, in strip centers, we reworded it, I guess is the way to say. Interior tenants cannot have signs on corner businesses. That's basically not reserved for those who rent out the corner space. Because you can see in some cities, I'm not going to call any out, but there are just signs all over some of these strip centers, up, down, left, right. So this cleans that up. Administration, we wrote in a clause to grant the city manager or their designee to issue citations for zoning code violations. That didn't exist currently. It also allows a sign to be placed, calling out the violation until the nuisance is abated. Last, trees. There is a section that we created for tree removal and tree replacement in commercial developments. There are a few locations in the city that are heavily wooded. This is going to protect the, not all of them, because you can't say a land is not developable, but they have to work with the city, submit a plan showing what they're removing, and they have to get as close as they can to the equivalent diameter and caliber of the trees they removed. Yeah, go ahead.
And if I could just touch on something for general regulations. Section 1488 is a section that sets standards across all the districts within the city. And so, but if you actually go into that section and you read the terms of what those regulations are, oftentimes they actually call out one district or two districts specifically. So for example, like fence heights in District K can only be so tall or so long or what have you. And so because those are more pertinent to only one or two districts rather than across all districts, we thought it would be, it made a lot more sense to take that out of Section 1488 and then relocate it to where appropriate, specifically to that district where it's a requirement. Yes?
Thank you, Joe. Second to last slide, let's see if I can get this mouse to work properly. We do have final residential zoning amendments. It was August of last year that council saw the residential zoning edits previously. So we have some updates and a few additions after implementing. Land use, we redesigned the format of the use table for clarity and the ease of understanding. Land use, we redesigned the format of the use table, for clarity and the ease of understanding, just pretty simple changes. Added minimum separation distance condition for short-term rentals to 5,000-foot radius from any existing. Multifamily districts, there was an acreage requirement of 100 acres maximum, which I thought was odd, but we relocated that to the multifamily, sorry, to Note 5, so it's called out with the rest of the notes. We added a restriction to prevent garages from being converted into garage apartments or secondary dwellings, people need somewhere to park. Building setbacks, we redesigned the format of setback tables for each district, for, again, added clarity and ease of reading. Added a note specifying areas of increased front yard setbacks, this was omitted in error in the first iteration, so we caught that and are bringing that back to, to the council. Height, we included FEMA floodplain reference to Article 9, which is storm drainage and flood damage prevention, this just basically creates, sets it to where you don't have to make a bunch of different updates and all the different ordinances, you update just that ordinance, and it reflects over to the zoning and the height. Last, fencing, added additional content in District M for multifamily to distinguish between perimeter fencing and interior fencing, they're not treated the same. And, Joe, this is his masterpiece, I'll let him explain it.
Well, I know this stuff is small, this was more to just kind of give you an idea of the overall look of now the finished and completed residential setback table. Again, as you just saw with the Commercial District, or the Commercial Unified Use Table and Unified Setback Tables, you'll see that the format was kept largely the same, uses on the left, the column rows for the various districts, and then, again, P, PC, or A to mean it's an accessory use, an approved accessory use that can't be permitted in its own right, it has to be included in the same building site as a SFR or what have you. And then calling attention to what Ian said, as far as the separation distance, that was Note 6, to read, "No short-term rental home shall be permitted within a 5,000, 5,000-foot radius, measured from property line to property line from any other previously established short-term rental home." And so what that will do is that will effectively limit the maximum number of short-term rentals just due to a lack of, you know, of area to put them with that 5,000 distance separation limit, that will effectively limit the amount of short-term rentals that are permitted in the City of Jersey Village. And with that, that concludes your presentation. It's, again, as I said to begin with, this was a joy, I know that I started working on this project not too long after I started this professional career, and I think that my skills have grown by leaps and bounds by trying to do this ordnancy right, both residential and commercial, on behalf of the City of Jersey Village. I'm tremendously thankful for my time working on this project, I know Ian probably feels the same, again, I'm tremendously grateful to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and specifically Rick Faircloth, who is a wonderful chair, and again, Drew Lawson, who, as again, as the liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission, was just a wonderful wealth of expertise. So that concludes your presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, I have, and just to be clear, this is just for the public hearing on what we just, what was just presented, so I have one card on this subject, on this public hearing, from Ernie Hewitt.
Good evening, I want to frown my old eyes here. Good evening, members of City Council, city manager, and the mayor, my name is Ernie Hewitt, I live at 15917 Lakeview Drive since November of 1989. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the Planning and Zoning Committee's recommendation with regard to minimum setbacks for the short-term rental properties. I want the public to understand that I have been opposed to having these short-term rentals in residential areas in Jersey Village, and have been inactive in direct communications with the mayor and the city council since last July, I'm trying to stop these STRs. I think the citizens of Jersey Village should know that the city council, mayor, and city manager have responded to all my comments in a professional manner. Of course, you may know, want to know why I am opposed to this, the obvious reasons are as follows: the loud noise and partying in some cases until the middle of the night, which have been responded to by the police on numerous occasions, that have been documented and required, police response time at 15-309-Glay-Morgan, 15-314-Philippine, 15-908-Congo behind my house, this creates an invasion of privacy as far as I'm concerned. The general deterioration in property values for those who are not renting basically at our expense currently a very illucitive profit margin for the Airbnb and VRBO renters. The safety concerns outlined by several homeowners with real-life experiences living next door or across the streets from units on Glay-Morgan and Philippine. The diminished potential attractiveness for younger couples moving into JV, which has a 67-year history, that Bobby recently outlined, of being a safe, family-oriented community. If the STRs aren't controlled and single-family domicile rights upheld, one might ask why $8 million is being spent for golf and meeting building in Jersey Village, if we're not trying to attract younger people into the, into the village. There's some lack of lodging hurdles required for safety, such as required for motel hotel operators. The cost of police and fire supervision, I don't believe has been adequately recognized in the permit fee. The necessary personnel to track down hot taxes due to the city, many operators are out there not paying, or possibly not paying, and if you're not registered, then you're probably not paying. And there's a general lack of accountability of Airbnb and VRBO. The existing restrictions on land use documented in previous discussions on this topic were specifically allocated to all JV lots and, as residential only. We all know what this means, a single-family unit living in-house, and I recite these restrictions once again, restrictions in Jersey Village subdivision dated October 201954, saying, "No lot shall be used except for residential purposes." Amendment of those restrictions dated June 15, 1971, covering all lots on Congo and Lakeview Street. Final judgment dated February 1, 1972, outlining further residential restrictions, recorded 174-29-1278. Each one of these documents recited above refers back to the residential restriction outlined in Section 3 of the original restrictions document. Homebuyers have been on actual constructive notice for over 40 years of these provisions. It's my belief that nothing has gone on in Texas and other cities that would invalidate the enforcement of these restrictions by the city. There are a lot of municipalities facing issues with STR, so let's, let me give you a brief outline of what is going on in Texas. There's a lot going on in the state as follows, more than 26 shots were fired during an incident in a short-term rental home in Plano, which were listed on VRBO and Airbnb on February 27, 2023. One of the bullets was fired into a three-year-old's playroom in nearby house. Residents of Plano, through the Plano Texas Neighborhood Coalition, are fighting to prohibit short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. The Arlington City Council voted in 2019 to ban most short-term rentals across the city except in the areas surrounding the entertainment district. The Second District Court of Appeals in Fort Worth recently upheld the City of Arlington's regulations for listing on sites like Airbnb and VRBO. The City of Dallas has been devised an advisory board voting nine to four to ban all STRs in residential areas and consider them lodging, which is exactly what they are. Seems like the playing level for motel hotel operators is a little uneven also here. Now, moving on closer to home, the City of Bel Air is considering an ordinance that would restrict homeowners from renting their home, their own properties, causing mixed response from residents. The proposed ordinance submitted by council members Jim Hoatsy and Catherine Lewis would set a six-month minimum requirement for renting and leasing a single-family home within the city. The City of West U is currently fighting an ex-Texans football player named Darrell Sharpton from building a new pad with six VRBO units on it. Several residents, including a resident representative from the Dunn Lady Park homeowners of the coalition, spoke out against this VRBO project, currently his application is on hold. The City of Katy imposed additional taxes and regulations for short-term rentals as of 3/28, according to the Community Impact Newspaper, Austin believes this just has to do with a mandatory state hot tax. By the way, Galveston imposes a 9% additional city tax in addition.
I'm sorry, Ernie, that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Joe Brothers? Joe, did you want to speak on the public hearing, because you filled out just a regular public comment card?
Well, I just got a couple little quick comments.
Okay, because you also had something about an intersection at Congo and Senate, so I figured you were going to want to speak in the regular public comments, but if you, you do, you can either do the regular, if you want to speak on both of them, you wouldn't be able to speak on the street issue now.
I can't, well, I can't, it's in the Senate.
I know, but we have strict, like, we have to, the comments have to be specifically about what is being proposed. If you want to talk about both, you can talk during public comments. Okay. That'd be the easiest thing, I think. Okay. All right. There being no one else desiring to speak, I now close this joint public hearing on the proposal to amend Chapter 14 Building and Development by amending Sections 14-100 through 14-104 to allow for updates to residential development standards, and the proposal to amend Section 14-5 definition, Section 14-11 penalty, Section 14-88 all districts, Sections 105 through 110, Section 14-244 permits and fees, Section 14-252 commercial signs, Section 14-283 off-street parking, and Section 14-309 specific standards to allow for updates to commercial development standards, and we are closing the hearing at 7:35 PM. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and the city council members are prevented from discussing the subject, and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. So I will go ahead and call Joe Brothers first.
Okay, I'm Joe Brothers, 15710 Australia, for 36 years. Anyway, one real quick comment about the Airbnb, I'm a landlord, so when I have a vacant house, and then I've got one house with a swimming pool, I usually get a phone call or somebody, you know, wanting to lease it out on a master lease to go ahead and do their hotel motel business, and I don't have any desire to be in the hotel business, so, but anyway, so just that comment. And then, then the, I had a good friend, a neighbor of mine, at the intersection, and then this has been a while back, but at Congo and Senate, she was car wrecked, but, and just like when I was coming over here just now, the bar on my car, and then when you look at those crepe myrtles there, and I think if you probably do a study, you probably see that there's a lot of accidents at that intersection, and you don't, you don't see it because the crepe myrtles camouflage it, so just look at that. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate it. The next card I have is from Mark Malloy.
Hi, my name's Mark Malloy, 7803 Hamilton Circle Press, City Council member for the City of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens' comments for the regularly-held 0517 2023 City Council Meeting, please make my verbal comments and documents given to the City Secretary a permanent record of this meeting. The first thing I want to ask questions about is the time that the mayor and city council chose to have their council meeting to discuss priorities at 5:30 this afternoon. Many of the Jersey Village taxpayers are still at work or on their way home from work at this time. The mayor in his monthly newsletter tells the Jersey Village taxpayers about this meeting, but, you know, like I said, there's a lot of those citizens that most likely cannot attend because of the time that the city council chose to have the meeting. So, the next thing is, I'm here to talk about the 8.7 million or more-dollar golf course clubhouse and event center, and I want to know the total amount that the Jersey Village government is paying for the complete total project, which is the new clubhouse and the renovating of the old clubhouse into an event center. And I'm asking for all costs associated with the aforementioned projects. The Jersey Village government chose to not allow the Jersey Village taxpayers to vote yes or no on an election ballot to decide if they wanted their taxes spent on the Jersey Village government's new golf course clubhouse and event center. But now, I see where the Jersey Village government, they, the Jersey Village government, are considering asking the Jersey Village citizens taxpayers during the city's regularly-held 2024-year election to indebted themselves for $25 million. So now, what I want to do is talk about past bond referendums. Surpluses belong to the people but managed and entrusted to elected government officials placed in office by the people. Here is information about bond referendums in the year 2002 and the year 2007. The Jersey Village citizens voted to approve both of these bond referendums specifically for residential streets within the City of Jersey Village, Texas. The projects were done, but there was close to $1 million left over. The Jersey Village citizens voted specifically for all of this money to be spent on repairing their residential streets, but because of the way the Jersey Village government had the bond referendums written at that time, the city manager said that the money spent out of these funds for the Jones Road Extension Project, which is where the Village Center is going to be located, or for utility lines, which makes this project acceptable and in accordance with the bond proposition. The citizens of Jersey Village needed that money spent on their deteriorated streets, and every penny of their voter-approved debt should have been spent on their residential streets. A past council member says the money should be entrusted to the elected officials for them to make the decisions on what it should be used for. The citizens of Jersey Village, Texas should be concerned about that belief because there are current government officials that have that same belief. The 2021-2022 city council was considering doing a $20 million bond referendum, but then decided to reduce the bond referendum to a $10 million, you know, to a $10 million bond referendum. And it was specifically going to be that they were going to ask the Jersey Village taxpayers to indebted themselves for the $10 million specifically to fund the construction of a new golf course clubhouse complex. The Jersey Village government decided not to take the chance that the Jersey Village taxpayers might not approve the bond referendum. The Jersey Village government already had enough money accumulated to build their golf course clubhouse complex, so they decided to not allow the Jersey Village taxpayers to make the decision, and are going forward with building their new 8.75 or more million-dollar golf course complex.
That's time, Mark, thank you. Next card I have is from Jim Fields.
Mayor and city council, my name is James Fields, I live 16413 St. Hillier, and thanks again for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. And mayor, congratulations on your reelection. I have some recommendations, and the first one is, the city should not be involved in any risky development plans, baseball stadium, we had 466 people that did not want that, so if we proceed with that, I definitely suggest that we have a vote on that. Also, I recommend that the land in industrial area be sold, and those monies refunded to as property tax money to the citizens, or turn it into a park, again, citizens will make that final decision. Another thing, these surpluses are out of control, we should have a cap on surpluses, there'll be 10% of expenditures, of expenditures averaged over five years, that can be adjusted. This excludes the rainy day fund. All right? And on these meetings, that we have all these executive meetings, it's ironic that these are public monies being spent on major projects, that it could impact the taxpayers for decades, and they're in secrecy. I can't even get an answer on what the negotiation points are. I don't understand why, and hopefully we'll find the answer. Okay. This is tourist two, Concerns. 50-plus developers contacted for the first proposed plan, and everyone walked away. I couldn't get an answer why they walked away, but I think I have an idea. The current developer has no experience in the stadium development, period, our letter of intent has been signed, we definitely need a better vetting process in any project we do. No projected revenues have ever been presented at city council town meetings on the stadium, that's a problem. The land, and this is, this is crazy, after I looked up on it, the land is for industrial area use, or industrial use. It's next to a railroad track, on the other side, adjacent to industrial companies, such as a corrosive chemical company, adjacent, a half-mile away from a concrete plant, 500 feet from a recycling plant that melts lead down, 2,000 feet away from a mobile home park, that's- That's just insane. And then on top of it, there's a creek and a right of way traversing through the property. And that's, if I was a developer, I wouldn't do that either for those reasons. And again, the city does not need, you know, you say affordable housing. I wish the city would be forthright to say apartments. Now, tourist three recommendation, the city should not buy homes purchased by investors. That's completely contrary to what the tourist project was set up, and no townhomes. Now, these are some issues that hopefully we can improve this year. Clark Henry Park was an absolute mess. Over four pounds of broken eggshells. What was even more disturbing is when I'm picking up the eggshells with a volunteer, the city workers were looking at us. I don't understand that. Unbelievable. Also, I encourage mayor and city council to drive through the city. As I was walking campaigning, over 10 junk cars are in driveways and in streets. To this day, there are two cars, their registration has expired, flat tires, in the streets. This has a huge impact on attracting quality citizen and our property values. The people who are breaking the codes are no longer at fault. You know why? The codes haven't been enforced. I recommend city council to drive around the city, take interest in your city, and check what I've seen and witness what I've seen. The one thing I'd like to suggest, because the problem I think is so severe, we should have, maybe have a buyback program for some of these junk cars. Okay, ethics. All board members' names documented with their legal names, no more nicknames. People who own property in the tourist three areas should not be allowed to purchase other homes in the area while on the board and sell it back to the city. Pool management, that's coming around real soon here. Almost every year, a patron at the pool is injured or pool rules are not enforced. For example, glass bottles in pool area. Also, patronage is terrible and needs to be improved. Taunting the children by walking back.
Sorry, Jim, that's time. Thank you.
I do have one question, Mayor. Can I ask this?
You can ask me after the meeting if you'd like, but your time is up, Jim. I have, the next comment card I have is from Joe Hewitt.
Good evening. My name is Joe Hewitt. I reside at 15917 Lakeview Drive with my husband, Ernie, who I told him he should always practice before he comes, that he has five minutes. Oh, well. Anyway, mine will be much less than five minutes. We have lived in the same house in JV for over 32 years, and I'm coming to you this evening with my concern about the busy intersection of Senate and Lakeview. For a long time, we have witnessed firsthand that many cars that are going through that intersection frequently run that stop sign, or many cars that really never come to a complete stop. And then there's those times where there's just confusion about who has the right of way, and it's probably because no one's come to a complete stop. There have been some serious accidents there, and this in the past, and the city may not be aware of how many numerous near misses there are during the day. Because we are so close, we get to see this. Two weekends ago, while I was working in our front yard, I heard a very loud crash, only to look up to see two cars out of place with both their airbags inflated. I also witnessed a car crash last month, but it happened after the fact, that involved two cars with one having a mother of three little ones. Since the city is reviewing the vet budget, I am coming here tonight to make a recommendation that will cost little money, but I believe could be extremely beneficial. I am suggesting that the four-way stop signs at Lakeview and Senate, that they may be solar-powered LED stop signs, those stop signs that have the lights on them. And looking online, I think the range of price for these stop signs is somewhere between $800 to $1,400 per sign. My research on the efficacy of these signs noted that in 2004, Texas did a study that reported a 28.9% reduction in the number of vehicles that failed to stop fully, and a 52.9% reduction in vehicles not slowing down at the intersections. Also, in 2014, Minnesota conducted a study and found that there was a 42% reduction in right angle crashes, which I don't know what that means. That probably means something to you, but the right angle crashes. And also reported drivers were significantly more likely to stop fully after the installment of these LED stop signs. Again, unless you are sitting at the corner of Lakeview and Senate all day, or like us who live near the intersection, you would be surprised at the number of near misses that occur. Also, we should take in consideration the number of pedestrians that cross that intersection, including walkers, bikers, families with strollers, dog walkers, and schoolchildren. Let's not wait until something horrific happens to take action. This seems like a fairly easy solution to install these solar-powered LED stop signs at the four-way intersection at Lakeview and Senate. And that's what I have for tonight. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much, Joe. Next card I have is from Will Beasley.
My name is Will Beasley, and I live on Lakeview, and I'm just come here to show support for the, there's been an email campaign to try to get the Clark Henry Park sports field budget, I guess, put forward early and money allocated. You know, Carrie and some other folks have put together a kids rugby team for the youth, and one of the things that we're struggling with is that there's, in Jersey Village, there's so few sports fields, really, there's none. And this would give us the, you know, the first one. So, and that's really all I came to talk about. So, okay, thank you.
Great.
Did I cross over my time?
No, no. Thank you, Will. I really appreciate it. Next card I have is from Carrie Davies.
Hi, everyone. Hello. My name's Carrie Davis. I live on Rio Grande, 8213. Building on from what Will said there, just ask if you can consider the, well, this is quite nerve-wracking with all your, ask you to consider the development of Clark Henry Park. Just a couple of reasons why. Lots of groups, including ourselves, use Clark Henry. It's a really great facility, but conditions can be pretty variable, especially when we've had water out there like we've had this last, especially this last couple of months. With that, you mentioned Founder's Day. Founder's Day was really great, I'm fully supportive of it, but the knock-on effects on the field can be pretty detrimental. And we had lots of organizations and kids this weekend playing amongst mud puddles and all the trash that was on the field, not just from the eggs, but from all sorts of things. So something to help with that. It would help, the development would help attract more organizations in. We've got I-9 coming in, and we've got others throughout the summer. But there's all the activities that could happen here in the evening that we're missing if the area was to be developed. If we make a list of activities for children, particularly high school and middle schoolers, there's not really a lot for them to do around Jersey Village. A lot of them leave the community to go and carry on their activities, so something that we could do to keep the community local would be really good. We were lucky here to move here in Thanksgiving of 2015. I understand that this was suggested in the 2016 compenation plan, and then again in the parks master plan in 2020. So when you guys are discussing the budget and so forth, if you could just allocate some of that for Clark Henry, in particular, the field development, and perhaps some lights that we can use it in the evening, that'd be really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And the last comment card I have is from Kimberly Anau.
My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 20th installment on Jersey Village, 1991 and 1992 proved that our city was growing as the concerns of citizens, employees, volunteers, and future endeavors were as popular as the TV show 60 Minutes for both years, while residents may have watched City Suckers in Wayne's World at Harbor Freight Tools. Council voted unanimously to authorize the city manager to provide support services for the fire, police, and public works departments for various nonprofit groups who request services for special events. The city's northern extraterritorial jurisdiction had the beginnings of residential development such as plating requirements and a need for a bridge to extend Rio Grande for ease of access by residents and city officials. To become Wyndham Village, the 190-acre area would have 113 homes on 40 acres with 140 acres of golf course green space and retention ponds for water runoff. City council unanimously voted for this annexation. Public hearings also occurred, such as to rezone 26 acres on Village Green from District J to F for 90 patio homes with private access streets, which is now the park at Jersey Village. A letter of commendation was read from the Jersey Meadow senior golfers to EMS personnel for a life-saving incident at the golf course. Jersey Village High School representatives presented two plaques of appreciation to the fire and police departments. Acting Police Chief Lindsay presented a meritorious service award to Detective Sergeant Mike Kelly for apprehending suspects in an armed robbery and shooting at Wendy's. Reserve Officer John Hart and his police dog captured a murder suspect that had eluded several other police departments. Due to lower property evaluation vegetarian restrictions, Chief Lindsay was asked to contact the 100 Club for donations of patrol car video cameras and bulletproof vests, valuing at $15,000. Police did have an agreement with Harris County Sheriff's Office to exchange three handheld 800 megahertz radios for their use of our K-9 response team police dog. There was an approved request to change and adopt for a new city seal. A welcome booklet for new residents would be available explaining the city functions and history. There was much discussion over speed limits for the residential streets as well as intersections needing stop signs. The city buildings became smoke-free. A citywide blood drive in September 1991 resulted in over 75 pints donated for Carol Fox, whose jobs included city secretary, municipal court administrator, tax assessor collector, and managing city administrative functions. The generosity of the citizens' donation was impressive, but Mrs. Fox passed away on Christmas Day, 1991. In March, a resolution passed renaming Senate Avenue Park to Carol Fox Park with a custom sign described by Mrs. Jerry Edgar of the Beautification Committee, and was requested to be in place for the park's dedication ceremony during Founder's Day. A plaque was presented by Mayor Pro Tem to be installed at City Hall for Carol Fox. Founder's Day was a great success and included a parade, rides, games, live bands, and a dunking booth. There was much discussion, research, qualifications, and time taken to have playground equipment removed and replaced with safer and durable materials, yet to be challenging and in each appropriate group areas for the parks. The first years of the 1990s were really a sign of the future for Jersey Village to expand into the place where more young families want to live, and for all of us that want to keep improving this unique community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. And that is, that's all of the public comments we have, which brings us to the city manager report. Austin Bleece.
Mayor and councilors, the report's in front of you, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council for the city manager? Okay, it doesn't sound like we have any. So we are now going to move to the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda. Does anyone want to remove it? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time on the consent agenda.
I move that we approve all items on the consent agenda.
That might be a first.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The consent agenda passes unanimously. We do have an addendum to our agenda, which I'm going to go ahead and go to the addendum at this time, in case anyone's following along. So, item one on the agenda addendum, Consider Resolution Number 2023-23, Electing a Mayor Pro Tem. One second, let me, I don't know if I've got... Well, I'm just going to say, all of us up here have a pretty good idea what the role of Mayor Pro Tem. The city charter does call for city council to appoint from amongst their membership a Mayor Pro Tem. Our current Mayor Pro Tem is Councilmember Michelle Mitchum. So at this time, I would accept any nominations for Mayor Pro Tem.
I'd like to renominate Michelle Mitchum for Mayor Pro Tem. I think she's done a great job.
Okay, we have a nomination for Michelle Mitchum.
I'll second.
Okay. I think we have, so we'll make it from a nomination to a motion to renominate, and a second, if I'm understanding correctly.
I will move to renominate Michelle.
Okay.
And I will second that.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to be sure. Any further discussion?
I'm going to disrupt. I think Michelle's done awesome in her role and played well, performed well, especially in your absence. I'm also old school. I remember 1992, when those things were going on that Kimberly mentioned, and I want to consider tenure. And so just offer the opportunity for the most senior person on council to do it if they so choose, and that would be James Singleton.
Okay. So we have an opinion registered, but we do have a motion and a second.
I'll move for Joe. I'll move for James.
I know we don't have an actual rules of order by which we operate, but I'll apply something akin to Robert's rules and just say that the first motion takes precedent unless there was a privilege motion, which this isn't. But we'll see how it pans out. So we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Congratulations again, Mayor Pro Tem Mitchum. Okay, that brings us to item two on the agenda addendum, Consider Resolution Number 2023-24, Assigning Council Members to Serve as Liaison to Various City Committees and Boards. Obviously, we have in the packet the, all the current assignments. We haven't had any changes on council after the election. Is there anyone who wishes to change an assignment?
No, it's fine. I will say, my concern is, I think with the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals and what is the other one I'm on? Board of Adjustment, which sounds like the same thing. It's not. My concern with that is that they have historically met at noon, and that, I think, either that needs to change, or we'll need to look at having a discussion on a reassignment.
And we can always do that if council so chooses. So in the meantime, unless there was someone who wanted to jump on that grenade and swap out with Councilmember McCray, I would entertain a motion.
I also, I'm not going to jump on that grenade, but one thought I have is if somebody's not able to make a meeting, there's nothing stopping them from contacting others and seeing if someone can step in for them and be available at the meeting. There's nothing stopping any council member from attending any meeting and providing input. We don't run the meeting. We really don't get to give much of our own opinion. It's really just, if we're asked questions, to provide insight from a council perspective, but that's it.
And that's a good point. At least, I'll just speak for myself. I work a hybrid schedule, so I've got a lot of flexibility in that regard. If you can't make it, I can always work from home that day and drop in for the noon meeting if need be, so we can work on it.
What's the volume?
What's the volume of those meetings? Like, how many do we have per year? Are they on demand?
It's not many. It depends on the issue, like, I don't think Lori can tell you. It kind of depends on whatever issues are at hand, so sometimes we'll have multiple, and then sometimes we'll go months without one. I don't have a problem at all with the committee with that, being that liaison. It was more just something to be aware of.
Yeah, that time is a little tricky. Does anyone want to make a motion at this time?
Sure, hold on. I'll make a motion to Consider Resolution 2023-24, Assigning Councilmembers to Serve as Liaison to Various City Committees and Boards by Keeping Them the Same.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item three on the agenda addendum, Consider Resolution Number 2023-25, Appointing Directors to the Crime Control and Prevention District Board for the Term of Office Beginning May 2023 and Ending May 2025. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor, this item is just to put the newly elected officials onto this board. Just need a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
I'll motion to approve Resolution 2023-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Item four on the agenda addendum, Consider Resolution Number 2023-26, Appointing Directors to the Fire Control, Prevention, and Emergency Medical Services District Board for the Term of Office Beginning May 2023 and Ending May 2025. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor, same for this board. This put the newly elected officials and their position on the fire control board.
Let's keep up this pace. I move that we approve Resolution 2023-26.
Second. A motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. So we are now back on our, our main agenda document, so regular agenda, item I-1, Consider Resolution Number 2023-17, Appointing an Alternate Non-Voting Member to Alternate Position A-3 on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the Unexpired Term Ending September 30th, 2023. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor, we had a resignation for a position A-3, and this item is to fill that position for the term that will expire on September 30, 2023. There were several applications in your meeting packet, and you'll need to review those and appoint a member to serve in position A-3.
All right, thank you. Discussion amongst council.
This is probably where that train slows down. I have read and know a lot of these people. I would say that out of all them, Sonya Tjerni Burleson has the longest-standing community involvement, at least at a very high public level, and I think she would be the person looking at the committee, looking at how, all the different pieces, and coming up with a variety of inputs. Sonya's my recommendation.
I'm going to hop on that bandwagon, and I was also going to suggest her myself. She was very interactive in our last event, and she comes to, and helps coordinate. She comes with a wealth of knowledge, and she's really, really good for the community. So I, so I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-17, Appointing Sonya Tjerni Burleson? I'm so sorry, I butchered that. To the Parks and Rec A-3.
I'm a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Second was James Singleton.
I apologize, Sonya. I'm going to learn that much better.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item I-2, Consider Resolution 2023-18, Authorizing Applications for the Harris County CDBG MIT Program. Austin Bleece, City Manager.
CDBG MIT. They shortened the shortness of it. Mayor and councilors, tonight we have the opportunity to offer you to authorize a grant applications to the CDBG MIT program. We've got two applications that we would like to submit. Application one would be for just over $6.5 million for the city cost share of the White Oak Bio-Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade. The city is about 40% owner of that, of that plant, and the project totals right now are estimated at about $13 million, although with inflation, you never know what that'll come back at. But those improvements are necessary for the plant to continue functioning, and they have to be done one way or another. If we can get some grant money to help, that would be fantastic. Application two would be for $3 million for the Congo Street Full Street Reconstruction Project. That would include a wider street for safer travel to and from Senate Avenue to Jersey Village High School and Post Elementary. New water lines for the entire street, improved drainage in the street to bring it up to standards as well. The $3 million would cover about 60% of the total cost share. A lot more information about the programs in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Great, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this item.
Austin, like you said, we own 40% of this. See, you're going out to grant money or trying to go for grant money, which you've got an awesome record for, and it's worth a shot, right? Miss the shot if you don't take it. If we don't get this grant, do you feel like the other 60% of ownership is on board to spend these costs, or is that...
We don't really have a choice. These costs need to be spent. These improvements need to be made. Clarifiers last 40 years. We're pushing 50, so...
There's, I mean, we need to redo Congo, but we've also postponed it. So while it may be needed, the other members are already in support of spending this money, though.
Yes, Robert has been to all of the MUD meetings to rally the support from the MUD directors themselves, because the board has had issues in the past of wanting to spend money, which is why we took a roadshow to the MUD meetings to tell them, hey, this is the shape that this is in. They set up a tour, showed people what it is, and they're all on board now. So Robert and Danielle did a great job in getting that, getting them on board.
That's good to know. What's the, in the shorthand, what's the timing of this? Should it be received? Did, is there a date? I'm sorry if I missed it.
We would know in August, late August, if we would be on the list of recommended projects to the county, and then that has to go to the GLO for the GLO to review and approve. So who knows how long the GLO approval could take, but we should know if we at least make a shortlist by the end of August.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2023-18.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. I am going to call a few items out of order, just so that we can get Rick up here and go. Yeah, yeah. So I am going to go ahead and call item I-4, Consider Resolution Number 2023-20, Receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's Final Report Concerning the Proposal to Amend Chapter 14 Building and Development by Amending Sections 14-100 through 14-104 to Allow for Updates to Residential Development Standards. Rick Faircloth, Planning and Zoning Commission Chairperson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The commission has, has met since we had our public hearing, and we have agreed to amend that table that was in there. We originally had, from our last meeting, we had agreed to a 5,000-foot separation of the next short-term rental. We didn't get 100%, but we did get, we had one abstention, or, I mean, one negative, and we're now changing that, that the short-term rentals will only be allowed in District M, which are the multifamily residence, the multifamily areas. And that's M, which is 290 Jones Road, West Road area. So effectively, this will not allow any short-term rentals in the, in the residential area if this council accepts that report and then approves whatever action they want to do.
Okay, thank you, Rick. And again, this is just receiving the report at this time. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll move...
I have, oh, no, I was going to say that I had a whole lot of thoughts there, but all we're doing is receiving it, so go ahead and...
I move that we receive, that we approve Resolution 2023-20. Receiving the report.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lawson, and a second from Councilmember Singleton. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes, and now I'm going to go ahead and call item I-5 out of order. Consider Resolution Number 2023-21, Receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's Final Report Concerning the Proposal to Amend Chapter 14 Building Development by Amending Section 14-5, Definition, Section 14-11, General Penalty, Continuing Violation, Section 14-88, Regulations Applying to All Districts, Section 105 through 110, Commercial Use Regulations, Section 14-244, Permits and Fees, Section 14-252, Commercial Signs, Section 14-283, Off-Street Parking, and Section 14-309, Landscaping Standards in Order to Allow for Updates to Commercial Development Standards. Rick Faircloth, Planning and Zoning Commission Chairperson.
Yes, as we, we met, and we had all of the information that our building officials had made a great presentation, and we had no changes other than what was presented in our packet and what's being presented to you folks here tonight. So we had a unanimous acceptance of all those.
Great, thank you very much, Rick. So again, this is just receiving a report, receiving a report concerning the proposal regarding the proposed amendments.
Move to approve Resolution 2023-21.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Rick. So that we're going to circle back to item I-2, no, I'm sorry, item I-3, Considered Resolution 2023-19, Stating the Intent to Annex a Certain Area of Land Into the Corporate Limits of the City, Describing the Area of Land to be Annexed and Describing the Services to be Provided to the Area of Land Upon Annexation. Austin Bleece, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, the city's been contacted by several property owners in our ETJ about getting water and sewer services. Many of these are close together between Wright Road and US 290 Long and south of Charles Road of FM 529. Due to the number of property owners that reached out, we took a proactive approach and reached out to everybody in that area to see if they would like water and sewer. The informal survey came back that nearly 60% of the total property value there is interested in that. Based on that, we had a preliminary estimate done on what it would cost to put water and sewer services there. Engineer estimate for that was 3.5 million for water, 3.8 for sewer. We've been able to get some data from people that are over there and from other public sources about their water and sewer usage. It's not great data, but it's, it's something. The data that we have, which is very limited, shows that would buy $140,000 in revenue to the city utility fund if there had been city water and sewer there in 2021. Actual usage is expected to be a lot higher than that. We anticipate a majority of those users have 1.5-inch meters, which would be approximately $450,000 for water impact fees and $250,000 for sewer impact fees. Once again, that's a conservative number. We've, the impact fee fund balance right now is about $1.2 million. Study is estimated, we should do an impact fee study. We'll talk about that at another point in time, I believe, PNC or the CAC committee talked about that as well. We should have enough water capacity there to handle this. If the council is interested in entertaining this idea, talking about it further, the first step would be tonight to pass this resolution. We would have to call another meeting, not earlier than 21 days, but not less than 30 days after this resolution's adopted. So that window would be June 7th through June 17th. Staff would recommend Monday, June 12th for that date if council were to pass it. There's a long process to go through this. The owners would have to petition, sign the petitions and everything, but this would be the first step. And by passing this resolution, it does not commit the city to taking the next steps, but it keeps the ball rolling and it keeps the conversation moving forward.
All right, thank you, Austin. Discussion amongst council.
Austin, besides the pain of maintaining a well and the costs involved, is there anything that's going to force a homeowner, anything part of this annexation that would, not a homeowner, but a property owner, to pay those impact fees and become part of the city? I realize that some of them want to, but can they maintain their own well forever?
So right now in the ETJ, they can, they're not bound by any kind of city regulations, so they can do whatever, you know, whatever service they have now, they can maintain it.
But if we were to annex them, then they would have to connect, correct?
Well, two things. One, you'd annex them as they exist now, and so then they would come in, but they would be non-conforming uses. And so, and my guess is, we'd have to go back and look at your code and your water provision services, all that stuff, but my guess is they'd maintain their well and their service as it stands now. They couldn't expand it or do anything like that. And then if it would, like, go below, you know, any kind of substandard thing, then we could, you know, correct that. But just like any other, any other non-conforming use, they're able to maintain that use at the same exact level they have now, any kind of expansion that requires, you know, a new kind of connection.
Question, my only other question, and we can dive deeper when we go, if we take the next steps, is beyond water and sewer and utility funds, do we have patrol or fire services to that area? Police patrol or fire services to that area now?
So right now, fire already covers that area, fire and ambulance, police, it's technically outside of their area, but I know they respond to things, accidents and those types of things, but part of the whole due diligence process would be finding out calls for service from the agencies and everything like that and doing a full cost analysis of what we think the city services would cost.
And there's not a lot of residential over there, if any, right?
There is zero residential over there right now.
Okay, thank you.
Would an ancillary impact of this is that, yes, we do currently provide fire services over there. Does the fire department sometimes have to wait an extended period of time for the current law enforcement to show up? Are we having trucks sit out of service because we're not providing law enforcement over there?
Usually the calls that we have there are not police-related, so we don't need a police officer. Can't think of any power line down. Maybe we've waited for sheriff's deputy 20 minutes to get there, but wasn't excessive.
I have a question. Is there any idea of sales tax that we would get from this area, or is it just property tax?
We don't really have any good sales tax numbers. Those would have to come from the business owners, because the comptroller's office won't release that data to us. Yeah, it's tough to get, get that information.
What type of businesses are those right now?
There's some oil and gas-related ones, there's a gas station, a couple others. Most of them are like industrial-type uses, the oil and gas flanges and valves and those types of things.
One positive, and I'll, is that we see it, the area as we see it now. What is it going to be in 10 years once 529 becomes more populated? And there's, there's more incentive for infrastructure there, right? I mean, yes, it would be more services that the city provides, but there'd probably be a lot more revenue generating as far as taxation properties, and it deems that it would probably enhance itself.
We have had a conversation with an owner that wanted to do like a truck lay-down yard, and he said, if you guys ever put water and sewer in here, let me know. We would change our use for sure. We would do something a lot better than that. So they were talking multifamily or commercial something.
I have to say, if, all the, if I, maybe you can correct me if I don't understand this, that basically what this does is just give you guys permission to get more information.
Right, we'd have the public hearing, and it would allow the property owners to sign the petition or not sign the petition. And if you don't get enough people to sign the petition, then the annexation halts there. Council ultimately has the final vote to do it. Even if everybody wants it, the council could say no. But yeah, this is just the next step in the process.
Well, then, I don't personally really see an issue with exploring an idea when it's not, if it's not binding, if it's not, this isn't making a big change, it's really just information gathering.
Can the lines be changed later in this process if we identify some tracks that maybe aren't worth our time to annex?
So the big trick, so several years ago, the, what was standard annexation practice for cities, that was, that was gutted by the legislature, and so this is one of the minimal, there's only a few ways that we can annex now, and this is one of those. And so the big, why I'm saying that is because the big key for this type of annexation is 200 property owners or less. And so the... And so the boundaries can be changed as long as the, those signing the petition are A within your ETJ, and then, and A it's, it's less than two-hundred people. So it would have to be changed if we, if we made a mistake or something and we found out there was more than two-hundred people, we would definitely have to bring that down. But if some opt out or whatever, then, or we just, there's, you know, complete, you know, pushback for some property owners, and we can carve, change some lines if we need to.
Last question, and it's just procedural regarding ETJs. If we annex this land and they say yes, petition us, and we say that, does our ETJ expand, or are we still at the limits where we are?
So I think you're, I think you're locked on that side, but if it was open, there's nothing there, then your ETJ would expand, but I think you're locked on that side, so it would just, it would just abut to whatever the next boundary is right there.
Thank you. Circling back to impact fees, so I know we're looking at doing a updated impact fee study primarily because costs have changed dramatically since we last did that. I would assume we would have that impact fee study done before we move forward with annexation and therefore would be able to charge fees based on more realistic costs?
Yeah, we would definitely push to get that done sooner rather than later.
That would be my biggest concern, is just making sure we're covering the actual cost of that expansion. I mean, it makes sense to me. This has kind of been something, again, it's something that we've kind of seen as a long-term prospect. We really only have so much room in which we could expand, and if we've got a large number of property owners in this area coming to us, again, that's, it is by far the easiest way to get that done, so it makes sense to at least explore it further and see what we can do.
I move we approve resolution twenty-two-three dash nineteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. And so now we are jumping to, to item I six, consider ordinance number twenty-two-three dash one-two, amending Chapter fourteen building and development by amending sections fourteen dash one-zero-zero through fourteen dash one-oh-four to allow for updates to residential development standards. Lori Cootie, City Secretary. No worries, we're moving pretty fast.
Yes, Mayor, this, this item is for the council to consider the recommendations made by the Planning and Zoning Commission concerning residential development standards and the amendments thereto, and keeping in mind that the commission has recommended a change from the preliminary report in connection with short-term rentals, which was initially set at a five-thousand-square-foot distance requirement, they are recommending a change to that to only allow short-term rentals in District M.
All right, thank you, Lori. A discussion amongst council.
For Austin or Justin, I know that there's three short-term rentals that are inside Zone A that have begun the process of seeking to be permitted, at least there was three as of this morning. Does, are they, are they affected by this zoning change? How does that work?
So if you were to accept the report as amended, and so that you're essentially only allowing new short-term rentals to be in, in Zone M, then what that would do is any, since you have a registration format now for, you know, permitting, licensing for short-term rentals, all of those registered short-term rentals would be considered non-conforming. And just, just like we were talking about the wells or whatever it would be, that use can be maintained as long as it's not expanded or violated. We'd have to go back and look at your permitting process, what might happen then is that it depends on, and I can't remember what the rules are set, but it might just make that thing last one year, and then if they're not, not in conformance with the code, then that permit would, might be automatically denied. And so then, all the short-term rentals will only be in section, I mean, in Zone M. And so then, if you want to adopt the changes as, the plan as amended, then we might want to, and you want to maintain the current registered short-term rentals, then we might want to go back and look at the short-term rental registration rules and account for that. But, but what happened though, so if, but if a new short terminal came in and they are not registered, they're only going to be allowed in section, in Zone M, one that's permitted would be non-confor, if it's adopted now, would be non-conforming according to the code, but they would be, they would be all right under their permit until that permit expires, then we'd have to make sure that whatever rules are in place at the expiration of that permit would either drop them off, or they would be able to maintain as a non-conforming use.
Can somebody remind me the number of nights for it to qualify as short-term rental? Is it thirty?
Yeah, less than thirty.
Okay. Somebody did bring up a very valid point, and I've rented my house to someone in Jersey Village that their house is being remodeled, and they wanted it to stay local, and so we did a three-month minimum, month-to-month after that, and there's some really valid use for that. I'm glad those people can stay in JV, but it, it doesn't sound like that's going to be affected here.
I have to say that of, of the contact I've gotten from people and the feedback, I have not gotten a single person in any of the conversations I've had, or emails I've received, or multiple phone calls I've received, that were pro-short-term rental. For me personally, like my interactions, it's been zero. And so I understand that, I realize that there is an element here that is big on, like ownership rights, property rights, and I do understand that. I also believe that a lot of people have chosen to live here because it is a city that does have rules and does have laws and does have regulations, and there are a lot of places you can choose to live where there are no rules or, I'll say laws, but you know, like Waller. But I think there's a lot of options for people that feel strongly that way, because, I just, I personally prefer the moving them to Zone M or only allowing them there. From the standpoint of, like I said, numerous people that contacted me, it was all, we don't want short-term rentals, you know, there's now two that have applied next door to each other on Congo, I believe, and there's just a lot of people that are very unhappy about it. And I do realize that at any point in time, whatever we decide, the state can change their mind on what it is we can do, and I do understand that, but I also am not a big believer in trying to, to hide from that stuff. Like, I think we need to take a stand, and then, you know what, if the state does it, then the state does it, but I think we need to do what we can for the people that live here and for their quality of life.
I actually had one person call in support of short-term rentals, but more from the property rights, investor rights, that sort of thing. But to your point, we also, as residents, have a right to live in a quiet and a safe environment and not having to deal with something like that next door. So I'm in support of adopting it as amended and having short-term rentals only allowed in Zone M.
I'm going to agree with that. The, I haven't had any come and say that they were in support, but I've had many, 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 many emails about the opposition, and all of the things in the emails are very valid. I don't think it's anything that's a big outlier. It was, if I was in the same house, I would have the exact same email off to my city council. So I agree, I think we have to be cautious in eliminating them completely because we don't want to bring a lawsuit against ourselves, and I think allowing them, but allowing them in, in the section M really makes a lot of sense.
I had one person that I met at a planning and zoning meeting, and he was in favor. In fact, he may already be in the process of seeking a permit, but my point, I'm not necessarily anti-the concept of short-term rentals, I'm anti-the lack of accountability that they can provide. Whereas if you have a rental house, you're, and you're, and you're renting and you have a party, your neighbors can come to you that Monday or Tuesday after the party and say, "Hey, we didn't like that, don't do it again," or "Work something out." You can contact the landlord owner. When you have an absentee owner, and when you have abs, effectively absentee renters because they're gone within a few days, that to me is, is a problem, and I don't see a way we can curtail that except in a, from anything but a proactive motion. The only activity we can do today to curtail that is reactive and sending our valuable police resources to knock on those doors when some, after something occurs, and by the time we're reactive, there's safety elements to that. So I'm, if we have to restrict that, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I think the, the major issue here is that we, we've had this, this push, not from in here, but from the outside, whether it be from state courts or whoever it may be, to try to argue that, that, that use of a short-term rental is just another kind of residential use. That sounds great in theory, but we know based on what people have told us, and we know just by the nature of the use, it's not. It, it's really a business that's located in the city, but it is nothing like a residential use like we know it. It doesn't create the kind of community that a, that a true residential use has. In fact, it, it tends to be destructive of it. And yes, people do have property rights, but there, there are systems in place to allow for people to organize those rights in a way that enables everyone to enjoy the property that they bought. No one here bought a property, you know, like you might be able to find where in Houston where there is no zoning, and there are some places where you might buy, and ten or fifteen years later, the whole area is completely different, unless you've got an HOA with strong deed restrictions. We're fortunate in that we have a different system here that does protect that, and that's exactly what this is intended for, so.
I also wanted to make a point, especially to Drew's comment about how the, it's more of like the lack of accountability. I for one don't think that it is a good use of our police, fire, and city staff time and resources to be spent essentially parenting these properties, because that's what it is, and it's, that's, I just don't think that's necessary.
I think I'm going to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twelve.
And just as a clarifying, are we talking about as recommend, as, with the recommended changes?
With the recommended amendment, correct. And I'll second that.
Is that sufficient for, okay, good. We have a, a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance with the recommended changes from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to item I seven, consider ordinance number twenty-two-three thirteen, amending Chapter fourteen building and development by amending section fourteen-five definitions to update the definitions used in Chapter fourteen, adding a section fourteen-eleven general penalty continuing violations to provide penalties for violations of Chapter fourteen, amending section fourteen-eight-eight regulations that apply to all districts to provide general commercial use regulations, amending sections fourteen-one-oh-five through fourteen dash one-ten to provide commercial use regulations, amending section fourteen dash two-four-four B one C regarding exceptions to required sign permits, amending sections fourteen dash two-five-two two B one A, and fourteen dash two-five-two two C one regarding signs in commercial zones, amending section fourteen dash two-eight-three regarding off-street parking standards, amending section fourteen dash three-oh-nine regarding landscaping in commercial zones. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor, this item is for the council to consider the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations concerning amendments to the commercial regulations in the city's code, and since the preliminary report was presented to council back in April, the report presented by the commission today does contain several amendments, and those amendments were listed in the council packet as well as with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this item would be to approve the recommendations of the commission.
If I may?
Yeah.
I just want to say, first off, to planning and zoning, this is, I understand, first, first of all, I'll say, like, this, this is boring, right? Like, this is not fun, exciting stuff, but it is highly necessary, and I want to say thank you to everybody on planning and zoning for this, because I remember when this came to fruition, what, a year and a half ago, and I remember sitting in that meeting and saying, thinking to myself, "Please, God, don't pick me." But it, I, and I also understand the kind of work that goes into doing something of this scope and the updating, and this was so necessary. It was, Drew will tell you, I mean, this, some of our stuff was seriously antiquated. So I just want to say thank you for all your work for that, it's very appreciated.
Yeah, I'll one-hundred percent back that up. It was, and it wasn't just the consultants who helped, who were very helpful, said, "This is it." I mean, there's a lot of fruitful discussion and questions and answers and back and forths, and quite frankly, I think there's a few things they hadn't necessarily thought of that the P&amp;Z committee added to the fray. So, so thank you guys for looking at the committee members that are still here. Thank you for all your support with that, and thanks staff too. I think they were, I know Austin and Lori and Justin were there, and Robert one time, and, and it was very helpful to get, get, well, I mean, hey, they commended me, okay? No, it was very helpful, and I think it's thorough, and it, it takes, it makes it a lot easier to read, as we've shown with Exhibit A, which has been behind our shoulders all meeting long, so I wanted to thank everyone involved with this. It's been a very fruitful endeavor.
So Mayor, I forgot to mention that the changes from, since the preliminary report were included in the proposed ordinance that you're considering.
Great, thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Well, let me just say, one, just one quick thing. I just want to say, I do, I have gotten comments in the past about our ordinances being very disorganized, having to go back and forth and everywhere else, and so my hope is, you know, we want to be as, we want to make it as easy as possible while still preserving safety and essential elements of our community. We want to make it as easy as possible for people to invest in our community, and I think this is a big step in, in that direction, to, to help people make it easier to, to come in and build things in our community. So, that was all I had to say. So if, if there was a motion, I would certainly entertain it at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-three dash thirteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously, which brings us to mayor and council comments. I am going to start down on this end with Mayor Protem Mitchum.
Okay, I just wanted to say, Happy Mother's Day to all of you mothers. Hope you had a wonderful day. It was kind of a rainy weekend, hope you snuggled in bed. I also, round of applause for planning and zoning. I mean, it's so detailed and specific, and I think it really leaves no room for error, and I love it. And then I just wanted to welcome Lori into the neighborhood, she just moved in down my street, and I love new families coming on in.
Councilmember Shepherd.
And I just wanted to say thank you to Austin and Robert. We've had a sewer collapse on Tahoe Street, and it's, you know, not the most convenient thing for the neighbors, but how you've gotten it to resolution as quickly as you have, appreciate that. I know we had some issues upfront on some communications, and, you know, we've resolved that, so I do appreciate you trying to get it resolved as quickly as possible, and we've talked about this in our earlier budget session, we have sewer pipes that have existed since before the Lord Jesus came on this planet. So we're going to have a lot more of this, unfortunately, and so just your diligence and taking care of it is much appreciated.
Councilmember Watson.
And as I've seen in several exhibits on social media this week, only flush what you're supposed to flush. I mean, they're, anyway, I, I'll come to happier thoughts. The next council meeting, because of the holiday on June nineteenth, will be June twenty-sixth, so before that is Father's Day, so as Protem, Mayor Protem Mitchum mentioned, Happy Mother's Day, also Happy Father's Day to everyone out there preceding that, and may you have a very reflective Memorial Day coming up as well.
Councilmember Singleton.
I would echo the comments about the holidays. After this executive session, we're going to have another riveting budget session for anybody that would like to hang out and talk about priorities in the city. Somebody once, class I took, the, the most important document in the city is the budget, and it's not really about the numbers, it's because that's where you put and it's not really about the numbers, it's because that's where you put your funds, and that shows where your priorities are.
Councilmember Craig.
I agree about all of the holidays and stuff. It's great. I do want to say congratulations to all the upcoming graduates, Jersey Village High School, anybody else, anywhere, that's, whatever it is, it's a great accomplishment. And, yeah, that's it.
Sorry, I just noticed my note here. Congratulations, Michelle, on a mayor protem.
Well, I just wanted to thank everyone that voted for me. I wanted to congratulate Jim Fields on running a very fantastic campaign. I, I know he was out there nonstop, because I think I probably, driving through the city, I'd see you walking from house to house. So I know you put in a ton of work, and I think those sorts of vigorous discussions amongst our city are good for us. It's, it's, it's good to see democracy in action, and to see an exchange of ideas. And when I was talking to, to people who were reaching out to me and saying, hey, we just went out and voted for you, you know, there, there were times where we, I'd talk with folks, and, you know, there may be some issues that they were concerned about, and that maybe we weren't, really didn't see eye to eye on, but the thing I kept hearing from people here and there, when they said, you know what, I, I see where you're coming from, I trust you, make me proud. And it, it was, it was nice to hear that from people, because sometimes I could kind of feel, when you get the slings and arrows up here, it can kind of feel like maybe the opposite of that, but I, I, I really, I took that to heart, that people said, hey, you know, we trust you, thank you for what you do. And I, I, I just want to thank everyone out there for that trust, because that means a lot. That's tremendous responsibility, and I'm going to work hard every day to, to continue trying to re-earn that trust. So, thank you again. So we are now going to recess the regular session. Council is now going to retire to a closed session at 8:47 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Government Code Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Sections 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and 551.071, Consultations With Attorney in Connection With The Following Items. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations With Attorney. A closed meeting to deliberate information from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village Ters Number Two, and economic development negotiations, including the possible purchase, exchange, or value of real property related thereto. And Number Two, pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations With Attorney. A closed meeting to deliberate the potential and possible sale, exchange, or value of real property located within Ters Three. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded.
All right, the closed session was adjourned at 10:41 PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session.